You're good.
Okay, then I'm gonna call our village board meeting for October 3rd, 2022 to order a roll call, please.
Nyla Frye.
Here.
Gary Hersberg.
Here.
Phil Willams.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here.
Erin Moran.
Here.
Joselle Zitzelberger.
Here.
Sam Kaufman.
Here.
Okay, first item we have is confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, and online availability.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wanakee Tribune on 9:30. The final agenda was posted in all three official posting locations on 9:29. And the final agenda and packet were made available online on 9:29. Two additional important requests is that please sign in on the sign-in sheet with your name, address, and municipality for accurate record-keeping. And for those interested in participating in public comment, if you would fill out the public comment form over by trustee Kaufman, and return it to me prior to that agenda item. Thank you.
Okay, so first, can everybody hear me right now? I just want to make sure everybody's good with this, or do I need to be all the way up here? Good right here? Awesome. All right, we're gonna make a little realignment in the agenda. I'm gonna move public comment before consent agenda that will give people an opportunity, if they wanted to talk about something on the consent agenda, to have that opportunity before we pass it through potentially. So with that, I'm gonna, do we have any public comments for this evening?
Michelle McGrath at 1708 Dunwoody Lane, Wanakee. Please.
Well, the first of the beginning, and thank you to us to all. I am Michelle McGrath from the project for me.
That's been in the way.
So I just wanted to share that we have worked to help our community members. We've worked about culture and health and state here in the community. We were affected by the school and our community members. Even one of the things I'm asking. Temporary liquor license. Not consent item, but rather decision. So you respected the fact. Plus, we had enough to speak to. Patient on coming to speak to all of our high school students about the importance of not drinking, not drinking, driving, not getting in the car. And I think that. That is coming home. I don't think it's a practice. Community around. We don't want a reputation of questionable model. We don't want to murder them. So ultimately, there are also plenty of. So my hope is that this can be a conversation that we have.
Thank you.
Lynda Ashmore at 114 South Fifth, Wanakee. South Street, I'm sorry. Thank you, Michelle, for speaking about that. I really don't think that it. My husband. So then my. Unfortunately. It's been a bit of. I'm not fond of Tiff. It has nothing to do with, these are very nice young people, and I wish them well. I just don't like. And the village. I'm even in a presentation about. And I did follow my. And I commend the village people. McDay. Basically. I was one of the people that really wanted to. And watched this. People are at the moment. Right without. So, thank you.
Thank you.
No further requests.
Any others that wanted to speak during public comment? Okay, then we'll move on to our consent agenda. I would ask, would anybody like anything pulled or look for a motion?
Please pull number three.
Okay, so we've had items three and four request to be pulled. Do we have a motion for items one, two, and five? Was it Sam? Okay, motion by Sam Kaufman, second by Phil Williams for items one, two, and five on the consent agenda. Any other comments regarding these? Otherwise, if called a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. So then we'll move on to item three in the consent agenda to approve temporary Class B retailers license application for Wildcat Youth Hockey Association for the Wildcat Classic at the Ice Pond on October 29th, 2022. Nyla, you asked for this to be pulled. Would you like to speak?
Yes, when I initially read this agenda packet and I saw that on the consent agenda that it was a youth hockey. Use, it just kind of took the air out of me because I feel that we not only need to talk the talk, but we need to walk the walk. And if this happens, we are not walking the walk. I deal with young children every day. I'm a childcare provider. I know that children learn from what they see us model. You can tell them something all day, but it's what we model that they learn by the most. So that's why I feel that we should not allow this Class B retailers license application for the Wildcat Youth Hockey Association for the Wildcat Classic at the Ice Pond. And I will say that in the event that this has occurred before and I've missed it, I'm sorry. I don't know if that's the case, but this just popped out at me and I just thought it's not, it isn't necessary. It's not good modeling for our children.
Okay, others, any comments? Joe?
When I went through the agenda, this was the one thing that really stuck out at me as well, and I wrestled with it for a long time today. The couple of thoughts that I had on it really were, the first one was, you know, why are we looking to approve alcohol at a youth hockey event? And that just really felt wrong. The second part of that, though, is I suspect the reason that this exists is that they're using it as a fundraiser. Not that that makes it necessarily good within that context, but. You know, we need to be able to fund things as well. Where I finally landed on it was basically as long as those families are okay with that, as long as the environment. I guess the Ice Pond is okay with that concept, as long as the Wildcat Youth Hockey Association is okay with that concept. I'm not sure that it's necessarily in our place to try to inflict those values. I don't feel good about that, but I think that's. That's my feeling.
Okay, others?
I guess I could weigh in a little bit. I have a grandson that skated and I went to a lot of hockey tournaments and everything. I'd never missed the fact that they didn't have a beer garden. Mostly, I was looking for hot chocolate. And as far as some of those fathers are, I wouldn't want to have any more enthusiasm. I think it's a bad idea.
Others?
I'm not in favor.
Something that is concerning to me is that they're only gonna be checking MIBs for the area in the first hour of events. I don't think we should approve that. If that's the case, that's not appropriate. Especially if it's a 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Assuming the first hour is probably one of the least productive hours selling alcohol. Yeah, it gives me mixed feelings. I think it's a decision families are making for themselves. Also, as a coach, as a sports. I've been around these sports. I think they're fine without it. It's also probably a big fundraiser for them. And it's the reality that these kinds of things or any fundraiser make some of these sports more, how these clubs can function and how we can provide opportunities. So. I guess I'm not really sure, but I think the ideas would need to be the whole. Be the right for me. That's.
Okay, Gary?
I think every organization wants to have a fundraising and they need to look to figure out ways to raise money. I'm not a hockey guy, but I'm on the hockey board for the village. I represent it for the facility. I just don't think that. Level, I think the people, the people that I know that their kids are in hockey, if they want to go have a beer, they walk across the street to Octopi. We have great facility there. They're great business. If they need a beer that bad, they can walk across the street and have one. I just don't think it's the right place at the rink, be selling beer at a youth event, so I couldn't support this.
Okay, I think everybody spoke except the exception of me. So here's where I noted everything, and my feelings are not gonna be, there's gonna be a little different than everybody else. So from a staff recommendation standpoint, the police department did recommend this, as well as the clerks department. This is not a school-sponsored event. It's a private event. I look at other sporting events that are school-related. Those are not allowed to have alcohol onsite. Because this isn't school, that makes it a little more difficult for me. I look at college sports and venues. The Badger Hockey Team, when it was at the Coliseum, did have beer allowed. Since it's moved to the Kohl Center, it does not, I don't believe. I don't think they've resurrected that to this point. And the only places served in those stadiums that there would be alcohol is in the suites, private suites. So those are, those are some things that I was trying to move myself to say, I think this is okay to do, but I also believe that there's enough alcohol in our society with students being exposed to. That the schools have taken a pretty strong stance. The Community Cares Coalition, same thing. And we've taken stances aboard in the past, whether it be through fencing to others that we're issuing to, to make sure there are very clear rules that they must follow. I noticed one of the things that was interesting in this was that they asked for a 7:00 AM start time for this and an end time of 10:00 PM. That seemed a little big for an ask to start alcohol at 7:00 in the morning. That actually was one of the reasons that I said no immediately in my head was I saw that at a youth function. I agree with my fellow board members with regards to that this is, this is a student. This is for students playing hockey. This isn't the parents playing hockey. If this was a parent league that they wanted to do something like this and they were doing a parent tournament, that may be different, in my opinion. But because this has a youth designation, I can't support, just because of the youth term that's in there for sure. So, with that said, I am, yeah.
Offer one comment for the board to consider, and kind of reading the room, I want to offer this. One note, this, a year ago, the license was approved. So I'm assuming that the youth hockey organization had an assumption that there would not be issue this time around. My thought is, being that the event isn't until October 29th, you do have another board meeting prior to then, you may wish, you may wish to give them an opportunity to come and discuss their application with you prior to denial. So another option I'd suggest is tabling the item, inviting them if they care to return in a couple of weeks to discuss it with you in person.
Brian, is there any legal reasons that we would need to wait?
Well, I would say this. I certainly think you have the discretion to deny it if you want to. I've got a few things that you need to keep in mind. One, we're gonna need to provide, generally, you need to provide a reason in writing through administration that we would pass along to them as to why it would not be provided. I've heard two potential reasons at this point. One is essentially operations. There's a concern regarding, you know, when and how IDs are gonna be checked. I think that's valid no matter what event, whether it's for a youth organization or for some, any type of events. I'm not, and again, the fact that I'm gonna say this doesn't mean you can't deny it. I'm not aware of the village ever denying a temporary Class B license. And so if we're gonna do it, and I think you have the discretion to do it, one of the things you have to keep in mind is we have to, we're always subject to a reasonableness test. And, you know, if it turns out that you choose to deny this because of the affiliation with the youth organization, then you will be, I believe, obligated to deny any and all applications that may be similar in nature in the future, and you may be fine with that, and that's fine, then you're treating everybody the same. I think the other thing that we're gonna have to make sure that we're taking a look at in all applications, and maybe we already do this through the police department, is the ID process, because I've also heard some comments tonight about the kind, which were perfectly valid comments related to we don't want to encourage drinking or allow drinking by youths. And obviously, at other events that we have in the village, there is drinking that goes on based on temporary Class B licenses that are issued, and there are children all over the place at those festivals. And so we just, if we're gonna deny it, and I think you can deny it now, I think you can table it, as Todd said. Keep in mind that those are some of the things that we should think about, and while we have the discretion to deny the application in this case, every decision that we make is subject to reasonableness test. That needs to be applied as we move forward, and we'd also need to identify the rationale for why it would be denied if that's what the vote is, because we're gonna have to provide that in writing to the applicant.
Okay, so I'd ask my fellow board members, would you like to table this, or is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion not to approve it, and I would also, and I don't know if this is the right place or not, but I would also like to somehow form guidelines so that if we come across this in the future, we have guidelines set as to when we would not approve these.
My suggestion on that would be to limit the motion in this case to the action item and the rationale for this particular action. I think that's another agenda item for the future that you could have is a discussion on guidelines.
Okay, I move not to approve the temporary Class B retailers license application for Wildcat Youth Hockey Association for the Wildcat Classic at the Ice Pond, 1110 Prairie View Drive on October 29th, 2022.
Okay, we have a motion by Nyla Frye. Do we have a second?
I'm not taking any questions.
We have to wait.
We wait for this. There's a second.
Further, there's a second, and then there'd be discussions. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so now we have a motion by Nyla Frye, second by Sam Kaufman. Now, any comments, questions?
Are you moving to deny this or to not make a decision?
I said, I said not approve.
Okay, in general.
If our preference would be to table it, how would we make?
We would vote against the motion if your preference is to table it, because as a motion to not approve is effectively a motion to deny, and then it would not come back to you. The action would be final tonight. What I would say is that there's been a motion and a second on this, and so we are gonna vote on it, obviously. I think we should try to, at least at this point, identify what, how many, what are the reasons for denial? Because if the motion passes, those are the reasons that we're gonna need to provide the applicant's writing as to why it was denied.
Okay, that said, we have a motion to deny and a second. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm gonna call, go ahead.
I think just where I feel conflicted and it's like, yes, we have these temporary licenses for festivals, and there's youth programming at all of them, or most of them, and they're not directly viewing it, or they're not the attraction. But it's also like, someone could come to Wanafest, bring their kids to the festival, and like, I know it's not the same thing, but so it just feels like a little too umbrella to make a decision right now. Our reason is just because it's youth. Or maybe they can modify. Side, or if it's not looking at the ring, or those, there's another state. So, I guess. Like more info.
With that said, Brian, if it's denied, they can still come back again, and they could request if they wanted to make changes to what they've proposed. Is that correct?
I, I'm not sure about you. Sometimes there is language in a code that if you get denied, there's a certain period of time that you have to wait before you reapply. So I would, I was not aware of the discussion on this issue as we led to this meeting. And so I would say that to the extent that you vote for denial tonight, so in other, you vote in favor of the current motion, I think you need to assume that that ends it for, that they will not be able to come back and make any subsequent requests for this October 29th event.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, I'm gonna call the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? No? So, motion fails.
So then, I guess the question, then I think, in light of that motion, then the motion, the question is, it may be appropriate for some of the same motion to table the action item until the next board meeting.
Okay, so I have a motion by Phil and a second by Erin. One other comment is, we still could make another motion to deny, but give the reasons that you asked for.
Well, you, right now, you have a motion.
Correct, but I'm just saying if this did, we still could make that.
Yeah, I guess. If this motion were to not pass, you could. I guess my question is, if this, right now, we have a motion and a second to table. What information, which means that this would come back in two weeks? I have heard discussion among the board members about some concerns with some of the information in the application, specifically as it relates to maybe hours that alcohol would be served, and what steps are gonna be taken if the application were granted to ensure that only people 21 or older are actually being served? Are those items that you would want staff to share with the applicant to make sure that they are prepared to address them and potentially amend their application for purposes of the next board meeting?
Gary?
I would say yes to that, and another concern I would have is, and I can just talk from Oktoberfest. You have to have, you know, so many people that are attending that have gone through a training class. And I don't know, that might be something the police department could come back and address that issue. I don't know if that's required for an event that's this small, if it's a size limit or why. But I think it would be important to understand if there's any type of training required, or certifications for people to serve under this license.
I would certainly think that that's something that we could look into at a staff level between now and next meeting.
Okay, any others?
My only reason for tabling is to get, and what Todd said, I did not realize that we had granted people's license. I could give them a chance to defend it, so.
Okay. Any others? Okay, so the motion is to table this for next meeting. Call in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. Then we have number four, approve five-year public works improvement plan. Joe, you asked for this one.
Yeah, the, within the budget impact piece here, it talks about the additional $40,000. $160 was saved, but the question that I guess I have is, it looks like the 40 applies to 2023 through 25, I believe. So it's only 120? Am I missing an additional 40 somewhere?
Oh, Bill, why don't you grab, either stand at the mic or grab it. Sorry.
You bet. So it says $160,000 was saved in 2022 by not having any undercuts. Is the entire $160 being applied to next year then?
It will be. We've still got some outstanding invoices we're waiting for.
Okay. Okay, and then the, I guess, then the second part of that question, in looking at the sidewalk repairs, I'm seeing 2023 through 2025 at 140, and then reverting back to $100,000 for '26 and '27. Is there a reason? Okay, is there a reason for reverting back? I mean, I can't imagine things are gonna get cheaper.
Oh, yeah, we'll get out to the five-year, yeah. Covering.
Okay, so there's less of an expectation that there'll be as much done. Okay. That's everything I needed.
Okay, other questions? Any else, any question on this topic?
Then I'll move to approve the five-year public works implement take or improvement plan as recommended by the public works committee and as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion by Josel Burger, second by Nyla Frye. Any other comments? Call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Next, we have our presentation, Public Information Meeting Village Referendum on potential public aquatics facility, including opportunity. Okay, this includes opportunity for questions from the public as well. So Todd, are you leading or Sue?
I'll introduce.
Go ahead.
And we'll actually have a tag team approach with the members of the village team, along with our consultant, George, coming live to us from Texas. So thanks for jumping on with us, George, and Sue will explain in just a little bit, explain about the engagement process that we had with our consultants. So thank you, folks, for being here tonight. It's good to have you, and we're, in addition to what we're gonna present, which might take about 15, 20 minutes probably, we certainly want to entertain any questions or clarifications that you might have from us as staff to help inform you as a voter on November 8th. So to the next slide, let's first just touch base on what is being asked of you. The question on its face is very simple. There, the quoted on the slide there is exactly how it will appear on the ballot on November 8th. Should the village construct a public outdoor aquatics facility with an estimated construction cost of $9.4 million? A yes vote means that you're telling the village board that you think they should. A no vote is that you think they shouldn't. So one thing I want to clarify about the style of this referendum question as it exists on this election is that this is considered a non-binding advisory referendum, meaning that a yes vote doesn't force the village board to build a pool or a clocks facility. A no vote doesn't force the village board to not build it. What it does is it advises the village board on their next step in decision-making. In one sense, you could look at it as a rather robust community survey to inform the board on that decision-making. I think one reason the board decided to approach this topic here in November is because in gubernatorial elections, we have a relatively large turnout. Generally, it's 80 to 90% turnout of eligible voters. So with that in mind, the board believes that asking this question here in November will give them a very strong sense for the true opinion of our community in regards to the aquatics facility question. So on the opposite side, a binding referendum is statutorily required for certain things. If the village board, for example, were to be building a new village hall and had to borrow money for it, state statute says we have to do that only by binding referendum. The school district questions that are on the, the same ballot in November are binding questions. So I want to be very clear about how this exists as a different type of question. And I understand the confusion that exists, but I, I just wanted to spend that extra time to explain how that, how that works. With that said, I think the next slide, I'm going to turn it over to Sue to talk about what got us to here today, right?
Yes. So talking about outdoor aquatics or aquatics, public aquatics in the village is not a new conversation. There are several people in this room that have been a part of that conversation for many, many years. In fact, approximately 20 years ago, there was another referendum on the ballot to build an outdoor swimming pool. There was a joint committee between Wanakee and Westport residents who supported that facility. It has not come to fruition after all of those years, but still continues to be something that people think about and ask about. In 2017, as a part of the village's comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, we completed a community-wide survey and the, the top vote getter on that list for things that were needed in the village were trails. But the second top vote was aquatics, was something that many, many people expressed interest in and asked the village board to consider more carefully. In 2019, we actually hosted a public listening session here in the library, was very well attended. There was a lot of strong support to talk about aquatics here in the village. Issued an RFP and we were just about ready to come to the village board with a proposal to study it further when COVID hit. And so as with lots of things in our lives, it was set aside for quite a while. Fast forward to 2019, we did quite a bit of research about firms that were available to us to help study this topic. And we came back to the village board with a proposal to bring on a firm by the name of Councilman Hunsaker. And we did that. The village board gave us permission to hire them and they came on board and have been helping the village study this question of aquatics. The next slide, Jared, we have with us today George Dynas. He has been our consultant who's been helping us all along. He joins us from Texas today. I'm not sure his weather was any better than ours was, but he is, he's a long ways away. Councilman Hunsaker is a firm that studies aquatics nationally and internationally. This is what they do. They are definitely experts in the field. So the next bit of conversation tonight, we're going to ask George to talk us through the work that we have done with the community over the last year to talk about the idea of aquatics here in the village.
Yes, good evening, everyone. As Sue mentioned, my name is George Dynas with Councilman Hunsaker. And we've had the privilege to work with you all over the past almost year now. I think that we actually kicked off the project last October. And so it's been fun to, you know, see this step by step getting closer to becoming a reality. And so with our feasibility study, we came in with really no preconceived notions and we met with the community in terms of the stakeholder, general public, we met with some stakeholder groups and we had a steering committee as well that we met with. We also launched a community survey as part of the process. And what we really determined is that, you know, we had support for outdoor aquatics, we had support for indoor aquatics. You know, a lot of the conversation revolved around, you know, yes, Wanakee High School has a nice indoor eight-lane swimming pool, but it is not available to the Wanakee community the majority of the day, only, you know, 5:38, 8:00 in the morning for lap swim and then some swim lessons. And then it's tied up the rest of the time. And on the outdoor side, yes, there are some, you know, outdoor swimming pools associated, associated with the homeowners associations in Wanakee, but less than 40% of residents actually have access to those. And so what we ended up looking at, if you can change the slide there, was we looked at an outdoor aquatic facility option. We looked at an indoor aquatic facility option, but then we also looked at a hybrid option, which you'll see in the middle there. And so we looked at, you know, the total amount of water that would be at each facility. We looked at the site requirement capacity. And then we looked at not only the capital cost, but also the operational cost for the facility. And so as we went through this process, again, you know, we looked at, at the pros and cons of each of these options. We came back to the village board for feedback, met with the village's leadership team as well as the general public on, you know, what was the right fit for Wanakee. And so on the next slide there, we had not only the capital, but also the operational costs, projected attendance numbers for each of the options. And really what we found is that the outdoor facility, you know, it is only open a, a smaller window of time, you know, typically Memorial Day to Labor Day is that general window of about 100 days of operation. And then in Wisconsin, it might be a little bit shorter and then school schedules can, can change that up a bit. But we did find that they would have the highest cost recovery rate of the three options. And on the next slide there, we have some of the key components that we would see being incorporated in this facility from an outdoor lap pool to support programming, you know, summer swim team as well as just general fitness and recreational swimming, but then also a leisure pool, you know, zero-depth entry with a children's area, water slides, some open water, as well as support spaces to support the facility that we have some example in the jury there on the next slide. And so with that, you know, it was really landed upon that, that outdoor aquatics is, you know, the need at this time. And that's what the village has brought forward to take to the voters here in another month.
Okay, hi, I'm Renee, Finance Director here. I'm going to take this next slide to talk a little bit deeper about the finances. So the slides that George had did show how they did their various calculations, but obviously people want to know what does that mean to their property tax bill? So just to reiterate, the capital costs, they're estimating about 9.4 million dollars to build the pool. And then the operating costs, you have your expenditures, labor, utilities, that type of thing. That's 428,000 estimated. The revenues that would offset that would be from, you know, concessions, memberships, daily passes, that type of thing. So your revenues would, that would offset, that would be 378,000, leaving the net cost to the taxpayer of approximately 50,000 per year. So when you take both the capital and the operating costs, so backing up to the capital cost, the 9.4 million dollars would be borrowed likely over a 20-year period. So there would be interest involved with that. So we had our financial consultants who help us with our borrowings, run the numbers to determine what the principal and the interest gather. That along with the operating costs gives a tax impact to prop, to the property taxes of $44 per $100,000 in assessed property value. So for example, if you have a $200,000 home, you would be paying $88 per year on your property taxes for both to get, pay for the capital and the operating costs each year.
Thanks Renee. So the, the villages, the village board's goal and the, the work that staff has done has been to attempt to bring to voters a very thoughtful and meaningful question that will inform us. And we, we admit that the more information, the better for you as a voter to inform us meaningfully. So that begs a really good question. And that is, it sure would be nice to know where the, the aquatics facility is going to go. Can you tell us where it's going to go so we can give you an answer? Good question. It's a tricky one for us to, to answer for you. And I want to walk through a few reasons why. The main reason is because the, the perfect spot, the undeniable best location just simply did not jump off the page to staff and the village board as we've, as we reviewed the potential locations. Either we didn't own the property or the property wasn't prepped yet for that use. So we started out, as you can see on the map here, by looking at what might be, you know, easy, general answers as to where a location might go. Here we looked at four, the, the little orange shaded bubbles there, identify areas of the village that might have available land. The village board asked staff to do a deeper dive into potential locations to inform them as well as to inform all the voters about those locations. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see that we did that dive. That's good wording to use for an aquatics issue is, we did that dive. And we looked at minimum acre, acres needed for the facility. We also looked at, we also looked at the ability of the village to control the property, including potentially existing parkland. So if you look at, there's green shaded areas, those are existing parks, existing parkland owned by the village with adequate acreage to potentially accommodate a, an, an aquatics facility. We also evaluated potential areas of growth where the village's comp plan suggests residential development that would include parkland would be likely in the, in the future for our community. So let's see if my little, my little arrow pointer can do the job. So those are indicated with little blue triangles here, over here as well. There's another one up here, also the Heritage Hills site. And then there's another one hiding up there by the quarry. So those are, I think, one more even there. So those are areas where it is reasonable to think that will expand in residential ways in the future. So we mark, mark those as well. Again, we remain unable today to tell you which site is going to be the best for a location. It will require frankly, further instruction from the village board to instruct staff to explore these sites more deeply, have conversation with landowners. So I see a potential scenario from the referendum. Let's say, let's say it's, it's a resounding yes out of the referendum. It's, it's 70% vote yes. It's, it's reasonable to think that the village board in further consideration then will tell staff to take the next step to explore more deeply the feasibility of these various locations. And I think as we do that additional work, which will take an investment, we'll start to see some of those locations rise and fall in list of feasibility as potential suitable sites. So that is where we sit on the question of where will it go? It's a tricky question. But with that, we want to entertain questions. Sue, I think you're going to coordinate a process to engage your audience here on Q and A.
I am just willing to be Vanna with the microphone. So if anybody has any questions, I will come to you. Stand up and share your question with us and we'll figure out who the right person to answer will be.
And I'd add too, Sue, if any of the board members want us to, want staff to go down a different angle and explain anything else in relation to the project, we're happy to do that.
Any commenters?
This process has been ongoing for a couple of months or longer, almost a year. What has happened in the last three to four months that was not as strong of an issue back when all this started is our economy. What's going to happen with that 9.4 million if everything keeps going up and up and up and up? And workers keep getting less and less and less and less? How will we have lifeguards when they can't even manage that now? In other communities, they've had to limit hours because they can't get lifeguards. The public beaches have been closed in Madison. The cost is going up and up and up. And let's face it, a house here in Wanakee assessed at 200,000 is probably close to a shack. And who can afford that? And we have a school issue coming up. That's going to be another X amount of dollars per valuation. We're already going beyond what we can borrow. It's wonderful to have everything you want, but how about dealing with what you need? Thank you.
I think you bring up a couple of good points that we can try to address them. On the point of the 9.4 million estimate, I might call on George because I believe, George, your analysis did include inflationary estimates. I guess my question for you, George, is to what extent are you still confident with those estimates that you used in your analysis?
Correct. So we had accounted for one year of escalation within our preliminary number, but we also have 10% contingency budget as well. And so, you know, it is, it is something that's a challenge for our industry right now as we've seen rising costs on, you know, waterslide production and just in general pool construction. And so it's something that we would, yeah, definitely keep an eye on once it passes through the design process to ensure that, you know, the costs are accurate. And, and sometimes it might mean that we have to just scale down a little bit. We can keep the same programmatic elements, but maybe it's just a, just a tad smaller, you know, but it still has everything programmatically that, that you all need for the community as well as to meet your cost recovery goals.
Sue, you are our local expert on aquatics, having been involved in the, in the field for some time and having managed an aquatics facility in a prior community. Can you touch on the staffing issues that you're seeing in the industry?
Mary Pat is correct. Staffing, actually, any kind of staffing is a challenge. There is no doubt about that. We're, we're ready for the challenge and we're ready to do everything that we can to bring certified staff in to help manage this facility, not taking that lightly. And, and know that from the moment that we hear yes, we are going to start to work on, on that task. One thing that I'm very excited about is that recently the Wanakee High School has implemented lifeguard training classes as a part of their physical education curriculum. And I know that that was specifically designed to try to get more lifeguards into the system. And Christie's very excited to get that up and running. And so that's a, that's a one step, good start. So good comments, something we're going to work on. We're ready to tackle that task.
I believe, and Sue will have to answer that piece, but I believe there would be annual memberships that people could buy versus daily passes.
George, we're going to bring, George, we're going to bring you back in to address the question. Did you hear the question, George?
I could, I know it was about memberships, but I didn't hear all of it.
Just a, just a moment, sir. Hey, George, before you answer, I would ask members of the audience, please use a microphone. That's the only way that we're going to get your voice into the Zoom system so George can hear really well and that we can record this effectively.
So George, I'm going to let you talk a little bit about how you put together. So George, I'm going to let you talk a little bit about how you put together the operating pro forma for the budget. But before you get there, Kevin, part of, I want to answer part of your question. And that is pricing people out of participating. And I can guarantee you that that is not going to happen as with all of the programs that we offer through the community services department. It is of utmost importance to us that every member of our community has access to our programs, whether they can financially afford them or not. And we have programs in place where we will be able to make sure that that people are not left out. Of course. And George, if you want to talk a little bit about how you put together that initial operating pro forma, I think that would be helpful. I will say what George has given us is a roadmap that we will have to work on further and we'll be here in front of the village board to present all of those fees and charges that would be associated. But George, if you can tell us how you came up with what you have before us.
Sure, so the first thing that we did was look at the anticipated operational expenses for the facility. And this is based on a number of factors, you know, number of gallons of, of water in the pool that we have to circulate, that we have to treat with chemicals per health department standards. And also looked at, you know, the number of lifeguards that would be expected on duty to safely lifeguard the facility. It included, you know, things like repair and maintenance and operational supplies. Pool heating obviously is a, is a big factor. And so we looked at expenses using local utility rates. And then for the revenue, we looked at varied pricing structure, you know, that we use as a baseline for the study. And as Sue mentioned, we've incorporated, you know, a certain number of free or discounted scholarship type admissions just to make sure that, again, it's accessible by all, no matter the financial situation that they are in. And, you know, we looked at day passes, we looked at season passes, since it's an outdoor facility. All were less than the cost of a movie in, in today's standards. And so, you know, we look at it as entertainment value, you know, that eight to $10 for, you know, two and a half to four hours of entertainment at an aquatic facility is reasonable. And then we also looked at the season passes and the family memberships, which actually if, if a family comes, you know, even say 10 times a summer, you know, that eight to $10 admission is now a three to $4 admission each time they visit. And so we wanted to make sure that we accounted for, you know, varied pricing structure. So as Sue mentioned, everybody can access the facility.
Others, just put your hand up and Sue will come over to you with the microphone. Because we really want more input. So if you have something, whether it be small to big, we'd like to hear.
Have we factored in the effective interest rate of the borrowing and growing interest rates? And if so, how do you feel about taking care of that?
So as I mentioned, we have a finance, financial consultant that helps us put together what our borrowing rates are. Obviously, when the time came to do the borrowing, you know, the, the market may be different, but they had to base it on what they're seeing at this time. Right, but the interest that they've computed is part of the $44 per 100,000. So they've, it's factored both the principal and the interest in there. But, you know, again, the rates could continue to go up over the, over, you know, by the time we got to the borrowing phase.
Jared, would you pull up the screen that takes us to the frequently asked questions? Sure. Anybody else in the room have a question at this point in time?
Maybe the board members have questions.
So one of the things that we have done is we have started on the aquatics website and Jared is going to talk a little bit about learning more. So this is a page that's on the aquatics website. We've already started to populate it. We will be adding some answers to questions that we heard here tonight. But we also want the public to know that we encourage you to reach out and ask questions. And anytime that happens, we'll share that question and that answer on our website. So if you have a question, I'm sure there's a neighbor in the community that also does too. And so we really want to work hard to get as many answers as we can out onto that website.
Thank you, Sue. So I'm Jared, I'm the deputy administrator. So I would be the, the best point of contact if, if you have to reach anyone within the village with any questions about this and I can, I can help you navigate that. Otherwise, we do have our website up here, which can be reached a couple of different ways. The simplest is www.wanakee.com/aquatics. That will take you right to this page, not to the frequently asked questions page necessarily. It'll take you to this landing page, or if we're staying on theme, the splash page, if you will. So it'll take you right here and then from here you can navigate to any, anything you want to know. Here is a link, for example, to our mailer that was just sent out last week. So you click on that, you know, you can see a copy of the mailer in case you missed that. Back here, if you want to learn more about the financials, you could click on here. We have all our documented presentations there. We already talked a little bit about the frequently asked questions. We have locations, you can see that, you know, the, what was in the presentation there. And then also, if you just want to learn how to vote more, you can click on here and this will take you right to our election page. But other than that, I mean, this is really your one stop shop. So this is going to have all the information that we can provide. If you do have any questions beyond what you find here, again, feel free to reach out to me and I can certainly point you in the right direction to get you in the right, you know, talking to the right staff person. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Jared, could you touch base on our next P I M coming up?
Oh, thank you, yes. So we will have another public information meeting just like this. That one will be virtual via Zoom and you can find out more about that if you go to the webpage here. And we'll also have this on social media as well. But under public meetings, we'll have upcoming meetings and we will have the link to that virtual meeting here on the website. So that'll be accessible to everyone to be able to attend that. That'll be on Tuesday, October 18th at 7:00 PM.
Most importantly, November 8th.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and obviously don't forget about November 8th.
Vote, that's, that's most critical and most important for us to get a good sense of the community needs and wants.
Okay, going once? I'll just go with going once. No more questions, it doesn't look like. So if you have any though, please direct them to staff or any of our village board members if you have any comments you'd like from us. All our emails are listed on that website as well, so please do reach out to us.
I'd just like to make one comment to the people that, we appreciate you guys coming. We, we wish you, we would have a room full overflowing here to get more comments for the village board. But I, I'd like to compare, I think what staff has done here, almost back to the village center. I mean, it took, you know, we've been working on this, as Sue said, for multiple years. We've done everything we can do to reach out to the community with surveys and meetings to try to get input and, you know, listen to the community. So I think this referendum will help the village board, you know, make this decision. And I just want to, you know, all of our staff have done a great job, you know, digging in every issue we could come up with, you know, to give us the best guidance. So I think the process in the end, whatever way it goes, was been done the right way, which is, you know, makes me feel good about the process at least.
Thanks, Gary. I, I would just echo what Sue said earlier too. The surveys that we did go out that we had a large response to, pool was, or aquatics was number two on that list behind trails. So I, I always try to look and say, it's easy to say no to things, but can we find reasons to say yes? It's kind of like when you walk by somebody on the street, the easiest way is just not look at them and look away and walk by. But you can take the time and say hello and take that time, that's like saying yes to that person. So I'm, I'm of that belief and it'll be interesting to see. I, I, I hope people take the opportunity to get educated with all the work that the staff has done and that is an enormous amount of time and effort that they've put in. So I'm thanking them again tonight. But please use the information that they've provided and ask questions. It'll be the best way for you to come to a conclusion for each and every one of you. Thank you. Okay, our next item on our agenda tonight is introduction to updated and revised village website.
That's me again. Do my, do my best here. So you're not going to be able to really see me while I go over this. So just bear with me. So I'll go right back to the website. So we currently, we contract with Civic Plus for our website. And every so often, they redesign the website to kind of keep it modern, make sure it complies with all sorts of regulations. You'd be surprised how many like ADA requirements are, for example, with a website even. And I think this, this website has been in its current format for at least five years, probably more. There we go, that's much better, thank you. So as I was saying, this, this website has been in its current form that you, you know as it today for probably about the last five or six years, I would say. So it is due for an overhaul and we're happy to be showing here tonight what that is going to look like. So this will be going live next, let's see if I do my math right, next Wednesday, the 12th in the afternoon. So just to kind of show you what some of those differences look like. So right here, when you go to wanakee.com, this is what you find, this is our homepage. It will look like, and if I can just try to get this out of the way here. You kind of see here, just, you know, our, our basic layout here. The new look, as you can see, a little more vivid, a little more color and pop. But more importantly, you know, we're able to fit a lot more information in the same amount of space. So a lot less sort of dead space in here. A lot easier to, to see, a lot better contrast. But with here too, we also have, I think, just a much more streamlined approach to information. That's sort of the, the focus here is making it easy to access information as easily as we can, as simple as we can. So here we have, you know, staying connected, we have our news feed, our calendar. Functionally the same as what's on the website now. It's just the, the best way to think about this is sort of a reorganization and then sort of a fresh coat of paint, so to speak. Down here, we'll have some more social media content. So right here, linking to our Facebook page, showing the most recent posts we have there. And then an easy way to access some of our YouTube videos as well. So if you want to quickly see a new, a new YouTube video that we have posted, that would be the simplest way to do it. So this is what the homepage looks like. As you can see, it's not drastically different, but it, it is quite a bit, I would argue, quite a bit cleaner and certainly is able to fit more information in a, a less space. So there's a lot less scrolling involved, a lot less time involved trying to get where you're, you're trying to get to. And so if we want to just look at, and I, I gave Bill a heads up here, going to use his as an example here. So this is what one of our department pages looks like currently. Again, you know, we have the clouds in the background, a little bit more, a little bit less contrast there. You know, just standard layout, but now with the new, this is what it'll look like. So, you know, from a standpoint down here, the layout's not fundamentally different. But I would say, you know, I think one of the biggest changes we've made here is keeping this how can we help you search bar is now the focal point really of every page on the website. So at any point, someone can easily search for what they're looking for if they're not, you know, if they're not having success, navigating it, you know, pointing and clicking. So that was really the, the biggest thing we wanted to see here was keeping it easy for people to, to utilize that search function at any point, anywhere on the website. So I mean, really, that's, that, that's what we're looking at here. You know, like I said, really the focus is just ease of access to information. So am I leaving anything out?
Yeah, as, as far as, by the way, I did insist that my picture be in the top right corner of every screen, every frame. Right, that, no. The, I would add that while we did invest in the look and feel, the biggest element of the investment is in the, the bones and the structure that you don't see here. One big piece is that this website is designed to specifically work particularly well on your handheld devices or tablets in, in a much better way than did the prior website. So it, it will, it will change its shape, change its operation functionality depending on the device that is in use. So you don't, you don't see that here, but that was, that's a big part of an improvement that should help the end user experience.
I'll just ask one question, I don't know if the other board members have any. Do we have a targeted group that we've looked at this with, meaning they've operated on it? Tested it out, made sure it's easy, functional, all of those things? Have we had like a focus group do that? Or do we have something that could be up here that gives suggestions if something isn't there? Is that, is that included in that? I just want to make sure.
We, we haven't had, we haven't had specific focus groups besides, by sides involving department staff in every department, looking carefully at how the website is working for their, for their needs, their uses. And we tried to focus on staff who are sort of frontline, frontline staff who hear the questions regularly to make sure we're not missing anything. But I think Jared, it's not unusual for you to hear community feedback and sometimes board members letting us know whether something's awry or not working right. And I will, I will say, a website is never a completed project. It is always going to be a work in progress and, and we certainly are willing to improve as we hear those needs from you or others.
Perfect, board members, any other comments or questions from you? Gary?
Will our meetings, when we get technology set up, will our meetings be able to be accessed from the website?
Yes, in fact, our, currently there's ways to access the meeting from our website. I think we can work to perfect that when we have our system. Keep in mind, oh, by the way, quick update, the end of November, they're starting the furniture remodeling in the village hall. So I'm guessing mid-December we'll have the new technology up and running. But that will be running live onto Facebook and YouTube and then archived on our YouTube page. So I guess I would turn to Jared and say, how do you see that interacting with our site?
Yep, so down here under the social media parts, I'm sorry, I'm back on the homepage here. So if you scroll down past the, our calendar down here by social media, just like you see this Facebook iframe or this interface here, you will also see that under like watch village meetings here. So this actually takes you right to the YouTube channel. I would envision, what I'm envisioning, and if it doesn't necessarily right away at 3:00 PM on October 12th, look like it, I will eventually get it to the point where hopefully we'll have an iframe there as well. So you could click on the most recent YouTube video, for example. Just to add a little more, because personally, I'm not, I don't like this dead space here. But that, that's what we look to do. So basically embedding the video on the homepage here.
Okay. Thanks, Jared. Oh, go ahead, Joe.
I was wondering if you can potentially address accessibility type things, screen readers, anything like that?
Yep, so that's actually a big part of why this looks more vivid with the colors. Again, as opposed to this, is that screen readers can actually sometimes struggle with contrast when it's, when, when the colors are not different enough. So you look at what we have now and it's just really actually, it's, it's not that bad, but you do have on some interior pages, let's go like Public Works, for example. Not the best example either, but when you have a really light background like that, it can sometimes, I'm trying to think, like how they, without enough contrast, it can be hard for readers to properly read that. And so that's actually where a lot of communities will get dinged for ADA or, sorry, Americans with Disabilities Act non-compliance. So you compare that to the- So you compare that to the, pair that to the new little more vivid, little more contrast, especially so on the homepage, where you, especially like with these buttons, for example.
Does, does the, does the new design, particularly with photos and things like that, are we alt-tagging them better?
Well, that, that's not something, let me put it this way. When you say that we, can we be doing that better? That would be on us. That, that, that won't be a feature of the website. That'll be a function of greater effort on staff's part.
Okay. Since we don't have any votes on this, thank you, Jared. Thank you, staff, for working on this and bringing this out and showing us what we're going to have in the future. Okay. Next, we have discuss and take action on change of agent for Walgreens doing business as Walgreens 5669.
I can bring this up. New staff needs a change of agent. They've done this in the past. But they have a new agent that needs to be.
I'll move. We approve Michaela Kowmeyer as agent for Walgreens.
Motion by Aaron Moran, second by Joe Zitzelberger. Any other comments? Call the question on favor, say aye. Aye, aye, opposed. Ayes have it. Next, under business items, we have discuss and take action on request to fly Ho-Chunk Nation flag at Village Hall during Native American Heritage Month.
Which is in November. President Zellner asked that this be brought forward to the village board for consideration. Certainly you're aware of the, the lengths we've taken to build our relationship with Ho-Chunk Nation and the Ho-Chunk people over the past few years. So staff is very supportive. I included in the, in your, in your packet, our policy, I would note that our policy references that we can raise a flag at Village Hall if those flags have been on display at either the state or nation's capital. Since 2019, the, all the native nation flags of the state of Wisconsin have been on display permanently at the Capitol. But as you might, you might understand why, they can't fly them all above the Capitol simultaneously. So they have been approved for being on display and that's, that's the reference language that we're working with here that gives you the ability to authorize the flying of the flag at Village Hall. So it's before you for approval for the month of November.
So we've had, as Todd mentioned, a lot of work that we've done with the Ho-Chunk Nation. And I thought this was appropriate and that's why I brought it forward and it's why it's in front of you tonight, as Todd said. So if anybody has any questions or comments, or we'd, we'd look for a motion.
We authorize the display of the Ho-Chunk Nation flag above the Village Hall.
Motion by Phil Willem, second by Sam Kaufman. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question on favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is discuss and take action on TIF agreement with 100 Baker Street LLC for interior improvements to the building located at 100 Baker Street. I think we're going to start with this all in open session and maybe take it all through there, but in the event we need to go into closed session, we'd go that, at that time.
Correct. And Brian will explain, I think after our presentation here, explain where it would or wouldn't be appropriate to enter into closed session on this discussion. I do want to address the, the one question that was brought up today, and that's the length of time between when the village board first saw this proposal and authorized staff to work with our advisors to evaluate the BUT4 test and bring that evaluation back to the village board. We use Ellers and Associates, our financial advisors, to review the BUT4 analysis in projects of this sort. They, we did, we did bring them on to do that. For lack of any better excuse, Ellers has indicated workload and staffing limitations that have backlogged their effort to complete the BUT4 analysis in timely fashions for their clients. I want to assure you that I've addressed my concerns with Ellers about the failure on fair turnaround for that work. And they know that that won't be acceptable going forward. Regardless, that is the reason that it's taken so long for this to be completed. It's been an ongoing scope of work. I'm sure that the applicants, David and Brett, can tell you how frustrated they are by that as well. But it's certainly not a fault of theirs for the length of time that this has taken to come back to you. But I do want to introduce David Jacobson and Brett Bauer. They're, they're going to give you a brief update on the project as it's come through thus far. And their reasons for seeking, seeking support from the village through TIF. So gentlemen?
Thank you. Thank you all for having us. That means that there's no obligation to the village to reimburse or increase in tax revenue that are so I know that there is a little bit of perception on a TIF agreement as the money that's going to be provided to us. But all this, what you do with that, I'll do it a pretty good is solidify basis from the start of the project and any increase in value to that smart project. After we pay the taxes.
Yeah, I can just add a little bit to where we're at with the project, right? It's been a while. We've been working on this thing. We're excited to get going on some of these. But we've already begun some improvements. We got, we painted the building. We've started to update exterior. My, you know, we're doing the basement build out as much as we can until we can get this next phase rolling and hopefully get those protections in there. The big benefit we see also is just we're, we're, you know, it's an awesome building with parking.
Board members, questions? Sam, any questions?
I have a question about the amount for sprinklers. Does that include both floors or just one?
Federal replacement, that's about 45 feet of about six inch that has to go from the city main to the building. So yeah, so that's all included in that amount. And that amount again, will be more outside, but the tip of a roof is kind of
The sprinkler system on the third floor, is that in the peak? So it covers everything? Okay. And then the alarm system, if one alarm goes out in one room, do they all go off?
Attic, including the attic and the second floor is all a dry system, but all protected. And it is, you might be able to speak this more being a firefighter, but I think it is a localized, whatever goes off, goes off in only that area. A sprinkler expert might answer that better.
Okay. Will you be hiring any employees? So, so will your managers be on site in Wannakee or for your company?
Off of the project that we're here tonight, but that does have plans for expanding.
Okay. So Sid, you brought up the historical aspect of the building. What are, what are your plans inside? Are you, are you keeping the building the way it is? Or are you going to tear out floors or put in new floors and adjust everything so it doesn't look the way it is now? Thank you.
Oh, I really appreciate out there on dial. She got pretty well covered most of my stuff. Okay, Gary?
Aaron?
No, I don't have any additional questions.
Bill?
No, I got all my questions answered the first time.
Go ahead, Doug. Before I speak, go ahead.
I do want to note that our community development director, Tim Semen, isn't here. Tim has worked very closely with the applicants and bringing this project forward. You do see on the staff memo that staff is wrecking, recommending approval of the TIF request. I just want to explain why Tim provided that recommendation to you. Certainly, we, based on Eller's evaluation, we've checked the box in regards to their professional financial review and confirmation of the BUT4 test being met. Aside from that, from a planning perspective, as we look at our intentions in creating the existing TIF overlay in this district, we included language in our project plan for this district to, to give credence to the historical nature of this district. And it encouraged the village to pursue developments that would particularly work to maintain and to sustain historic structures within our central downtown area. So in reviewing this, this proposal to come forward with both an intent to continue using the building as is in its, its current structure, and then adding amenities to the facility to preserve it with the sprinkler system in place, we thought aligns well with the project plan as was created by the village. So that's why you see the staff recommendation of support. And when you're ready, Chris, I know Brian's prepared to review elements of the development agreement.
Okay, thank you. So I did speak with Brian Adler today at FIRE and with the improvements that you guys have proposed, they would be fully supportive of it. Brian indicated that to me today. As far as the TIF assistance, there's, this is a debate in our community. There's some people that are very for it. Some people are very against it. And a lot of people that really don't weigh in one way or another. So it's typical kind of stuff. My feeling on this is this is a historic building. And there's many that fight for anything that's historic in our community. And unfortunately, sometimes that side of the group is also anti-TIF. So those kind of are at one of these things right now. Same kind of TIF situations happening with our existing TIFs that we're using the last year right now for affordable housing and using that towards things. Group would be for that against TIF to start with. So I don't want to get into a huge TIF debate tonight, but it's a frustrating thing. Because a lot of times people want it both ways within this. As far as what your ask was, my initial response was going to be no. As I went through this, I looked at it and thought, it would be nice if the due diligence would have been done beforehand, making sure that we had this in, in your class before you purchased the building, so on and so forth. And I see that you guys want to do something that's in a historic nature for this building. And that's what changes my opinion on where you're at with this. I think it's a great asset to our community to keep the, the buildings that are historic in nature. And as you mentioned, this is one of the oldest buildings in the community. It's a tinderbox. It's really not going to, it wasn't going to happen, in my opinion, that you were going to get any kind of housing that was going to go in there without sprinkler system. I think I said that at the very first meeting that that was, I, I brought that up to you, like, you're going to probably need sprinkler system in that. I, you remember that coming up and you were like, I don't want to, but that's how it worked out and absolutely. And I, and I see that, you know, you, Brian's going to go through numbers here in a minute. It's a chance to make it work from a financial standpoint without that assistance. I get that. I see that and I work with that on a daily basis with, with people. So I said right off the bat, you were going to need this and I, I believed it. Our fire chief was believing it. You're a fireman. So I was, I'm a little surprised that you didn't have that with it, but the so, and I'm not a fireman, so I can't even, even speak to that other than what, what I'm advised with. So I'll just leave it at that with my comments. I'm very supportive that you guys kept with this and I know it's a challenging thing for folks in, you know, out there that are saying this started back in an interest rate environment that was much, much lower than what it is currently today. And you guys are sticking with it, which to me says something about you as well in that. So Brian, I'm going to defer to you.
So let me just give you a little bit of background on the agreement that's in the packet right now. It's pages 101 to 119. I would, I would deem or term this to be kind of our standard PEGO TIF agreements, which means that I, I do agree with what the, the applicant has stated earlier. It effectively creates no risk for the village because the only money that would be going to the, the project is from the increment that's generated from the project. The, the, and at the end of the day, if, if there's not enough increment generated such that they don't get the full $209,000 paid back to them, then they're the ones who are at risk. The village is not at risk. The, I think the discussion that you've had already in open session is the discussion that needs to take place in open discuss, open session. It's essentially the policy discussion. To the extent that you want to have a, a discussion regarding the, the specific dollar amount identified, $209,000. If that's, that would be a term or condition that we could discuss in closed session. You know, if there's other things that you want to see added to the agreement, theoretically, those could be in closed session. Just as terms and conditions, I will say that the recommended motion right now is to approve the agreement, subject to final review and approval by Todd and by me. There are two things that we, we would probably add to the agreement at this point. One is there was a comment made about the lateral work that needs to be done in the property. In speaking with Wannakee Utilities, there is some, there is some water main that is on the land right now. We're going to need to get an easement for that. And so I think we would want to build just a standard easement language into the documents. I've also heard some comments regarding the historic nature of the building. If you look at page 103 of your packet, which is section 3A of the agreement, right now, there is what I would call standard language in there that says for the applicant to get the TIF assistance, if the agreement is approved, the, the, the work that's going to be done needs to be the, the, the work that's going to be done needs to be consistent with the site plan and the conditional use permit that have already been approved by the plant commission. We might want to build in some language into this document to, it sounds like they're on board with maintaining the historic nature of the project as much as possible, and that's what the Village Board likes too. As far as I'm aware, as part of the site plan, there is not exterior work being done. But we could, we could make this abundantly clear by having a little bit more clear language in that section three regarding maintaining the historic nature of the building, if that's a term that you would like to see added, just based on the discussion you've had to date. Certainly willing to answer any questions that you have. And again, if you, if you do want to get into kind of the nitty gritty on some of the terms like the dollar amount, that would probably be a discussion that's more appropriate for closed session.
Gary, any questions? Mala? Phil?
Just a couple of comments. Interest rates are lower. I, I had to pay 15, 18. You know, that, that building was something, they've tried to sell that for a number of years, and no one came forward. We kind of got used to it. And I think that's to their credit, I'd like to see this happen. The previous owner did change the building a whole lot inside, kept the outside up and everything, so I think he did a good job. And I think this is a plan that would be great, and I would support it.
Aaron?
He would have to pull away from this.
I guess just echoing what other people have said, and the fact that I think it's the way we can demonstrate that we value to the historical aspect of it, which could easily probably would be easier not to have a building with all these issues. So I could, I appreciate, I think, the work that has gone into it to make sure in a new way, in a way that I bring new people and let people experience the building in a new way, so.
No.
I'm, I'm not typically a huge fan of TIF, but given the historic nature here, I think it's probably a pretty good use for it. I would like to see the language that Brian was talking about, protecting that historic piece.
Sam? No comments? Okay. I would also like to point out that there's hotel revenue that comes from this hotel tax revenue, which we have been lacking here for the last couple of years, and that, that's something else that comes in this that's a positive from a financial side for us here in the community. So Oh, Mala, you have something?
When you finished, I, I just have, have to say something. I'm having a difficult time with this, because I love historical buildings. I love staying at bed and breakfast. And I've been told by the fire department that with the sprinkler system, they feel much better about it. But one of my concerns is, is what's there for the working, working person? You aren't bringing enough employee, you aren't going to have enough employees economically to help, you know, to help the community. Right now, the use of that building, Millhouse Quilts brings in busloads of people, and they send those after the people have bought their quilt material. They go to restaurants, they go to other shops in town. So that, I feel, was a big economic development thing. Yes, you guys will have your room boutiques. It will bring some people in, but one of my big concerns with this is there isn't anything in it for the workers. You aren't hiring people, and, and it sounds like the custodial workers will be through a contract company, which means they will be low paid. And I just wanted to voice that.
All fair concerns. I don't think it's fair, though, to compare us to the first floor, because the initial plan was to keep the quilt shop there. So we're only adding to it. They have chose to leave, so we are looking at new tenants. If we want to open up that discussion, that is phase two of our project, and it will bring staff, employees, a space out back. There's tons of space out back there that we want to build out. It's not being used right now, so folks can come and enjoy that. But unfortunately, I think that is a little outside of scope for our, our discussion today. We're really just talking about that second floor.
Kind of touch on that, yeah, the negotiations that we're currently in with a new tenant for the first floor would bring a significant amount of people to that area. And we think that it would be a huge benefit for citizens of Wanakee to actually come in and enjoy that first floor space if they're not staying at the hotel. And that includes the kind of deserted vacant half of the property that's in the backside, which has just been overgrown for many years and not being utilized at all. So we're hoping to kind of bring the whole piece of property back to life.
Thank you.
Okay, so anyone else? I heard Joe's comment about adding the language. I, I agree with that. I would make the motion to approve the requested TIF assistance development agreement, subject to final review and approval of development agreement by the village administrator, village attorney, with the inclusion of
The two items that I had mentioned.
Two items you mentioned.
The easement issue is more of a staff issue, but then we'll work on language regarding maintaining the historic nature of the, of the structure as part of the site plan.
Yes. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Do we have any other comments? Call the question on favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Me.
Guys get all of it? Eyes where, hands up, please. Okay, and nays? Okay, so five, two, it passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. I wasn't even ready for that. All favor say aye. All of yours say aye. Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.